Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor for Tim for Curtis.
Here.
Alderman Green, accent. Alderman Welch, accent. Alderman Madre.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
May I do that for him?
So, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Okay, we're here to discuss the fiscal year budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. I guess we'll start on this here. Alderman Jones, do you have any input or anything?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I want to share with you that, first of all, Debbie, one thing I can count on when it comes to the budget is you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Debbie invited me to meet with her about the budget, and she answered a lot of my questions, and I brought up a few suggestions, and it was lovely that did. I still have some questions, maybe I just forgot it, or, you know, didn't write it down, but one suggestion that I have. Some of these things are still too general and too vague. For instance, we have the new one that my, one that I've been working on, as you can see.
It's pretty much the same.
Yeah, but I have to look at my notes.
Okay.
So forgive me for that, but like the beautification and landscape, that's thirty thousand dollars. So who decides how that's going to be used?
Well, first off, y'all have to approve it. Secondly, if it is approved, then we go out and find out and find the landscaper. Rob had talked about that he had a designer that can actually design the entryway landscaping area at the park. So it's just, I mean, it's just a new item to, you know, just, we don't know yet. It'll be put out for bids, whoever's going to do the landscaping.
Okay, so can I help with that designer or whatever?
You might talk to him about that.
Okay.
He's got somebody that he knows.
Well, there's several people, it would have to go out for bid anyway. But we'd like, you want the beautification, we need money for beautification, and it's impossible. So a landscape architect would be something I would like to see, so it'll be a plan for everybody to agree with.
Okay, thank you. And just, and this may be off topic, but what happened to the art blast money?
I'm sorry?
What happened to the art blast?
Oh, I haven't seen any money yet.
Because that money is to help.
It's nine thousand, I think, a little over nine thousand.
Nine thousand?
Somewhere in the area. I haven't seen any money yet.
Is that in this budget? Am I not seeing it?
No, I haven't seen it either.
Okay.
And.
I mean, I know it's an immigrant or something that we're supposed to give, but it has not hit the bank yet.
Okay.
So I can't tell you a hundred percent what it is until I actually see it.
Sure. And the general fund reserves for a hundred and three thousand dollars, what's that going to go for?
That's been carried over for the last three years, thirty-four years I've just left it in there. I guess whatever you need it to be, any kind of reserve account.
Okay, so there's, it's not.
It's not here tagged or anything, or not to, not to my knowledge. Now, I think when Sean was here, I think they were going to use a hundred and three plus something to do some of the, I don't know what kind of projects Brad made to help you better with that, if you ask him.
Okay.
But I know it was, something was tagged about it. I don't know, it was before my time, so I, since y'all had, they had tagged it prior, I just moved it right across.
Okay, thank you. And then we're going to go clear over to tourism, security, twenty-five thousand, marketing for five thousand, and tourism for sixty-three thousand.
Can you get this line out, please, pass something.
Let me get, let me get over there with you, so.
That's towards the back. That's the second page.
Oh, you have to amount to?
Yeah. Let's see. Hotel motel, line items, three five one nine zero, three five two zero zero. And, oh, this, this new one shows tourism, security, and cameras.
Well, we've already bought the cameras. The other one did, the new one is not going to reflect that, and as you noticed, I lowered that because those cameras have been purchased. So that's why I went from fifty to twenty-five.
Okay.
And that's what has been carried over for the last couple of years.
Okay, so it went tourism, security, went from.
Tourism was sixty-three, it's three five two two hundred. Marketing is three five one ninety.
Okay.
Security is three one five eighty.
Okay. And so tourism, security, we've got the cameras. And what else is going to be left out for that fifty thousand dollars planned?
It just depends on whatever, that line needs to have paint out of it. Whatever's going to do tourism. You know, the marketing is if you do any kind of newspaper ad, if you're going to publicity, you don't make any kind of marketing. You know, like this, if you're going to do marketing on putting out something for the landscape or whatever that, whatever that category is going to be. Tourism, it just, it's a very, it's a big fraud.
Yeah, for, for the past three years, we've had those type of numbers in, always.
Okay.
And I, I would either raise or lower them, just depending on what the last couple of years, you know.
It'll change.
Yeah.
Okay, so how can we break it down?
I'm sorry? I mean, I don't have those numbers with me. If you want to come back and visit with me, I will break it down specifically what those numbers are. I didn't run any kind of report on each one of these line items.
Did you take tourism, though?
Four.
Four. Of the new one.
I tried to think of it.
Okay.
But it has gone down.
If you see marketing, if you see marketing, at year-to-date today, we spent almost four thousand dollars in marketing.
Three thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight.
Yes. Now.
Tourism, twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand, so those are what, I, I just left them up. If you want to lower them, I can, that's what we're here about, I can lower them.
No, I think that, that this is fine, I just like to know more details.
If you're looking on that new one on the far left hand, that is your actual, what we spent year-to-date.
And, and I brought it up to you in our meeting before, I'd still like to see, one day, maybe it's a fantasy, but to put HOT into a separate fund.
You know, I discussed that, too. What am, what in the world am I going to take out of this general fund to do that?
It's, it's just, like I say, it may be a fantasy, but I'd like to see HOT put into a separate fund, not including it in the general fund.
I agree. Well, I, I agree.
Okay, thank you. It'd be easier for us to track and easier for the auditors, so.
If we could figure out how, how much money to take out of their, I hope, I'm for it. I mean, how many years have y'all had hotel motel collections out here?
Well, I know at least four.
Well, I mean, it goes back to, it goes back to two thousand and three, as far as I can remember.
Whenever, whenever it was commingled, I mean, that, I mean.
Vet, yeah.
He's going to have. Yeah, well, they commingled it in your general fund. It should have been over there with a separate account, but that's what I'm saying, how in the world am I going to determine what to take out of there?
I understand. And let's see, I have a wish list.
Okay.
And I had, last year, you know, I've, I've not added much to the wish, wish list, and we've not really gone through this in a discussion, but. With the, it's projected that we are going to have revenue of six hundred fifty thousand dollars from HOT compared to five hundred and fifty last year. I'm suggesting, and we talked about this a little, maybe to add a part-time or full-time employee as a tourism ambassador to improve the city website, to take that burden off of Debbie, and help educate STR owners and all owners about, about tourism. And maybe even help keep track of HOT and solve the complaints when there's nuisance issues throughout the city. And I'd be happy to be a liaison for this employee, and I contacted Kate Terry with the Galsen Park Board, and she would be happy to offer guidance, too. I have more about that, just a second, let me look there.
We actually are considering doing that, not necessarily out of HOT tax, but out of admin, admin assistance.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for about a year now.
Just haven't, you know.
We haven't pulled the trigger on that.
Well, we've worked with Robert and myself in, of Georgia, and, you know, kind of be kind of a flutter to help us.
Yeah.
I believe that was included in my budget, correct?
I didn't remember doing that, though.
I believe it was.
Okay, moving on, and that's wonderful, thank you. Moving on, there's lots of areas in the budget that's just maintenance and, you know, building pool maintenance and repair. Maintenance and repair, I know, all, all throughout, and it's maintenance and repair. And, and we sure need a whole lot of that. Just curious, who did that work last year?
On what?
On maintenance and repair, was there somebody?
I mean, we, the mower does, the guy that, there's a place in Alvin that works on the mower for repair, and that's back in the shop. I mean, it just varies on what, you know, what they, what it is. The pool, I mean, that has maintenance. Building has maintenance, so it just depends, I mean, it just, it's a broad scale of.
Beach.
Beach maintenance. We've got gentlemen that we're paying now to take up trash on Saturdays and Sundays, that's maintenance. So it just, it, it's a broad, you know, spectrum.
Maybe you have any specifics that you would like?
Well, for instance, I know that Mr. Russell was paid for doing work on the beach. Does there a contract that Mr. Russell has with the city for doing that?
There's work order bids.
Work orders and bids for Mr. Russell? And he has, and he does that throughout whatever he needs.
What we, you know, what we need, if he's the one that actually does that work.
And is he going to be called?
I've answered that exact question.
Is he going to be called on for doing work more this year?
It, it depends on the work that we have to, to go out, I mean, that's more now to him.
It will, it will.
I mean, while I was doing it for, for several months, I mean.
It will go out for bid.
Okay. That's wonderful to hear.
If it's over a certain amount, I will, I will produce RFP for it to be produced, published in the newspaper the way we're.
When needed.
When needed, when it has to be over a certain amount.
Marvelous. And what's over that certain amount?
Fifteen years.
It's fifteen years.
Fifteen.
Okay.
I guess on one single project.
On one single project.
Right.
Okay. And I talked to you about conflict of interest, and did you look into that at all? Okay, well, anyway, you know where I'm going with that.
I, I am.
I appreciate it, we need to focus on the budget.
I'm doing it. Thank you. We'll move on to JP, Jamaica Beach Police Department. It's my opinion that we are not getting our money's worth. Where are the securities cameras? That was from a year ago, not playing with you. But that's from a year ago that we put that in the budget. And when will the, the police department have, be, be on, have a city website? That's also been in the budget for a year, and the.
I don't think they do that one.
Yes, yes, that's not mine. But the only thing that John Oakland had on his wish list, and was on my wish list last year, was the security cameras, but that just hasn't been a priority for the police department, apparently.
Excuse me.
Pardon me, I'm, I have the floor, please.
And I can, I can order.
And all I know is there's a contract on those cameras, I haven't seen the total numbers, which I explained it to you in the office, I know they're involved, that's all I can do.
We got cameras here in the, in the.
Yeah, we got, we got cameras at the pool.
We can answer a lot of those questions for you.
I got cameras at the pool, cameras here at office.
And you know the answer to some of them.
And I also got Facebook put on, all that.
I thought this was a budget meeting. Am I wrong?
Can I continue?
As long as you're dealing with budget.
I am dealing with the budget, I feel that we're not getting our money's worth. I'm asking where the community policing is, where the COP program was promised last February, where's data that can go on the Facebook website? We pay for it and we deserve it. I still believe that we need the citizens' police review boards and to help citizens when they have complaints.
That's not a budget term.
Then I'll move on. I'm offering, I have a boat slip over at the, to save money compared to buying and putting in a, a building and things for the, to store the boat or to be able to move the boat out faster, I'm offering that the city can use my boat slip, so that way it's not having to bring down.
I'll explain that tomorrow, I'm talking to you about it, it was going to give it to you, but yeah, I, I told you about that.
Okay, that's marvelous, and it's not your fault, Debbie, that the city hasn't had a third-party audit since two thousand and nineteen. I would think since, the mayor would make that a priority.
Actually, you know what, I, I tried to call them folks today, I leave messages and messages. I'm going to try to get the first one on their list for this, for when they start their budget audits this year, if I can get them.
Thank you, Debbie, and I really do appreciate all the time it took with me to explain and answer what the things that I had, I'm perfectly buying with everything explained to me. Like I said, I can always trust you when it comes to, to what you tell me, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think mine will make it take fifteen minutes, I was hoping. Everything that I, I worked out that I would send to the budget is based off of, of the seven, twenty-one, twenty-two budget versus actual spend. So all, everything you see is based off of this one document, is the most solid of the data I have. You with me? Okay. So what I was looking at, and I'll pass out, what I've been looking at, is that, to finish up this, to finish up this budget, you know, and so that it can be reconciled and balanced, in reality, I think, let's see, let me read over there. And I'll give you the rest of these. Okay. What, what I passed out is, what I see is proposed twenty-twenty-three budget projects. None of these are bit of truth. Not a single one of them, but we've all talked about them at different times. So I'm going to read out what I just gave. The first one I have is stage four waterline project. And underneath each one of these, I put basically what I think may be in there. Guys, I probably don't have it perfect, I just did the best I could. Okay, stage word, stage for waterline project, engineering construction, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. Lift station number one, or lift station number seven, engineering construction, what we have there is a pipe failure, and we need some man overcoating, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Now, can you, pardon me, can you tell me what that lift station is?
It's the one that's there in the back.
Bayside.
Yeah, it's in the, one of the new sections in the back. Beautification, what I put in it, I, I wasn't aware of the other things. I just put in into the things that Russell and I talked about the other day. I wasn't aware of these other items. But what I have for beautification is to, you know, because things are getting kind of raggy out there. What I've got is to reset, replace signposts, fix district signs, and install the remaining street signs. Replace and add other signs as needed. That's all I have in, in, in what I have here, thirty thousand dollars. That's the number I heard Russell. Waste treatment plant upgrade, what's in that one is engineering and construction, clarifier repair, and a new drive motor for the clarifier. We also have a non-podable water pump, and, and we need to do something with the merchant generator. Either upgrade it, split the lungs, I don't know what they'll do, but it's all slaloming. It really is. Anyway, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I got that number, Mayor, in discussion with John Mercier. John was out there, we talked about it, Robert was there, so, and later on I called John and went through this. And this is just an off-the-call number, okay? Best I can do. Beach user feed plant, that's, this is a, a project that's budget positive. But it's going to take some money, you know, to put it in place, thirty thousand dollars. The result of it is budget positive. The security cameras, I was aware that we bought, I was not aware that we bought cameras in working with Debbie. I, I saw what we bought and what we have. The reason I put it here was to brand up as a project, so whoever you assign to own it can come in and report to you, report to council. You with me? And sort of gather it together, rather than burying it and takes cost. You know, because basically what we have, what we have is a budget, there's basically two things, or three things. Fixed cost and projects. Fixed cost and we caught by this minute. So things get lost, or can be, or, and we don't get credit for what we do when we bury them down in the, in the fixed costs, you with me? That's how I see it.
Credit.
I mean, and we do good, but it's buried down in there and, you know.
Well, I think that's an oversimplification, but.
Yeah, it is oversimplification, but I don't want to get you. Okay, so, that's a list of projects. That's all I've got on that. I want to talk a minute also about what I was talking about. Oh, also, on these projects. Thanks for this, Julia. I won't take up too much of your time, more Russell. Here you go. Here you go, okay.
I'll share that with them, I'll look at yours if you don't mind.
Here, here.
All right, too many. Let's, let's settle over here.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. TML, Texas Municipal Labor. They have a thing going that they're sponsoring, it's a grant application boot camp, okay? It's three, to the first two hundred cities, under a hundred and fifty thousand people that sign up. Oh, you have to go to be to sign up. I tried to sign up, but I'm not employed, has to be the mayor to sign up, or it's an employee. It closes August thirtieth first. I think it's working.
Yeah, and like I said, that's something you can visit with Robert about, but let's stick to the budget.
I'm going to say a little bit on the back of this, okay? Here's two of the things that they offer, I circled them. There's one billion dollars out there building resilient infrastructure in communities. The point of it is, small, small cities, big cities gobbled up, small cities. Support communities as they undertake hazard mitigation projects, reducing their risk they face from disasters and hurricanes. The other thing they have down here, goes on my, what I did mention on my list, a very, I can go all the way down it, yeah, I went and stopped it. Pay West Beach Road, thirty-eight thousand, based by waterline engineering, sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Electric, electric vehicle charging station as a grant. I mean, thinking, like, maybe we look ahead, you know, to five years from now. Anyway, this program has, there is a grant out there, two point five, there is, to support communities to address electric vehicle charging needs.
Robert and I have done, we've already been looking into this, and we're, we're trying to take advantage of every grant we can.
I realize, that's good, I just thought.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
What do I know?
I just read it, I mean.
The electrical, the car or gas fuel stations.
But see, this thing, what this is, what this is, is, yeah, this is.
I'll sign up for it.
You with me?
Yeah, I'll sign up for it, yes, I'll attend.
You know what it really is, so.
I'll attend.
You're not going to fly to the grant, they're going to teach you how to do it.
I used to teach grant reg at colleges and universities, but I'll, I'll go to. I will go to.
You don't need this.
No, no, I'll attend.
One of the reasons we hired him was because of his great expertise.
All right. Now, I would like to talk just a minute. This is announced at the existing, and you've already covered this, when we made this new. But, you know, I want to, a lot of the way. All right.
I think that's a new one.
All right. Okay, this has got to do with the concept that we have two things. We have fixed costs that are always going to be there, and we have projects. And it's no use, I'm not looking at what we spend, it's the concept. So what I looked at was budget revenue for that, for this year, and then I looked at budget projects and allocations for this year for each fund. All right? And then I looked at, at each one of the funds, streets. We budgeted four hundred and twenty-three thousand, seventy-two dollars, we committed three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. We're on the budget forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This means we did a good job, is that, okay? Bulkhead, we didn't do anything on bulkhead nor tourism. If ever there was not, in my opinion, a priority item, that's it. Beach erosion, we didn't do anything on that. General Fund Reserve, a hundred and three thousand, to thank, we committed nothing against it, so we're just moving on, like it adds every year. And this will point, Black Bird List and Black Beard Lift Station, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget, a hundred and four thousand, nine thirty-three committed, we picked up a hundred and four grand. Oh, excuse me, I got my numbers wrong. Whatever the difference is, we picked up.
Fourty-six. You know, over five, almost six thousand.
Something like that. Waterline, three eighty-six, three twenty, we've committed three oh one, one fifty-one, looks like we picked up pretty good on that one. So that shows us basically on projects, and, and this is worst case, worst case, you agree? Four hundred pictures of dollars, three hundred and eighty dollars. And then, thinking the same, I think we're talking credit, we did a good job. Okay. This is a look, quick look at what we have now, the project. I know you guys are waiting on stuff that I enjoyed, but in my career, I, I started off with engineering, and then I went to managing both projects in engineering and construction, both. In late, the last ten years, I found out I loved the money. I loved the money, and I really started getting into that side, so indulge me if you would. Here you go. Okay. Our projected revenue this year, this revenue, were both in, looked like three million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm pulling this off of seven point two, you with me? And it's light as plums, it's kind of a million and two.
This one is probably going to be as close as, this, I actually did this report, and did this one Sunday at my house. I worked on this all weekend, yeah.
I bet you did. Okay, so again, here's the thing, what, what we have a fixed cost. This is the fixed cost it takes to run this city, all right? It looks like, with this year, this coming proposed budget, we're saying it's going to cost us three million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. Fixed cost, without adding any projects. So that's why I passed out the list of projects. You know, until we vote on these projects and we. You know, until we vote on these projects and we decide what we're gonna do, we're still in a little bit of a window. Um. Basically, that's it. We've got some carryovers, uh, different things, but, you know. Yeah, I got another note here. I'll just check if you do it. What I came up with basically was, we actually are proposing spending, i- if we, if we took all these projects, maybe we took some out, added others, you with me? Um, we would still be spending three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, say, three hundred and thirty, thirty thousand dollars this year. Just coming here, then, just coming here than we did this year. So we're, we're lowering, you know, what, we're doing the right things. We're moving the product that the city forward with the infrastructure. But we've done it efficiently this year, so we're gonna be looking better next year. Um. As said, I'm gorgeous enough. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, address a couple of things you said. You know, this is a, a four hundred fifty-three thousand in the budget. That's one of the things I've been very proud of. Uh, Russell and I, and, and Woody have worked real hard on really squeezing these guys to, uh, to come in underbid so we would have this money. Uh, we've had countless meetings with the subcontractors and specifying, uh, things that they, that they need to do so they could come back in and give us some new numbers. And we've, we've, we've worked hard trying to save the city some money. Um, as far as your proposed budgets, waterline, we're work, we're already working on that for twenty-twenty-three. The lift station, that's something that's in the process that we are working on. Uh, beautification, we've been needing to do that for a long time. I'm glad to see that. Uh, the wastewater treatment, uh, plan upgrade, we're getting second opinions on that. Uh, same thing with the lift station. We are getting second opinions, looking at saving, uh, the city substantial amount of money. Uh, security cameras, that's in the process, you know, and we.
It is that, it just, don't you worry, we need to put these things on one line item and.
And, and it's.
And in the public note what we're doing too.
They, they, it's, it's.
No, they were hiding anything. It's easy.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, other than that, uh, who wants to go next?
Well, you know, comment on the other, though.
Oh, which other?
The other, I haven't sort of had a list.
Hello.
You don't think those have merit card?
Um.
You don't wanna say that.
I'm not sure where you're talking about, the others. I just went through your list here.
Maybe I missed it. Where's your stuff? What was that?
Uh, went through your, the twenty-twenty-three budget projects.
Which one? I didn't hear the, the beach plan. I didn't hear the, the paving west beach road.
And that stuff, we, we're still visiting, we need all the visits.
We need to get the government to vote on these things.
We will be.
It needs to be a record.
What next, do you want to do?
I'm, I think we have, she's done a fine job. And it's, uh, you know, pretty much time to put it in. We've gotta get a, a pub, public hearing on it and schedule that.
Okay, I second what Woody has to say. Um, we need to put this thing to bed. Debbie, I've never seen somebody work so hard and so tirelessly to put together and guide council through such a detailed budget. Thank you for all your extra, but we don't work. As far as the budget goes, I, I have two things. If there's any money left at the end, and it's squeaking already. If there's any extra money, I'd like to see monies allocated to the park. We've all talked about park expansion project. We've all talked about pickle par, pickleball court and just the overall condition of the park. So if there's any money on the general fund left over, I'd like to see it allocated to the park, even if we don't get it in this coming fiscal budget, we can reallocate it to next and build on it. And on the municipal side, any money left over, I would like to go towards a P and M or M and R guideline. Repair and maintenance on all of our lift stations. We touched base on it a couple of years ago, and I thought I got started, but I think we dropped the ball. I think that would be a priority if there's any money left.
Well, if you look there, I think there's like twenty-one of the municipal.
I, I looked at your bottom line, Deb.
It was like ninety-nine thousand dollars, yeah, so I don't know what, what y'all wanna, I mean, I can go back.
That's worst case, Russell.
What's worst case?
What she's saying, the ninety-nine.
That's not worst case, that's her number.
That, that's it. I mean, yes, it's, I mean, you may be up in one line item, I may be short in a line item, but as far as, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
She's, she's got her bottom numbers here. We, we've got our municipal and our general fund budget, so she's got our costs, our receivables, and it's here. That's it. I'm, I'm done. If there's anything extra, I think those two projects, you guys.
I'd like to talk about the calendar. What I've got is this meeting today, August twenty-second. Would you, budget workshop?
Well, this is budget workshop for the first hour, and then we're going into our regular meeting after.
Yes.
Okay. During our regular meeting, which we'll discuss when we get there, you guys have to determine what tax rate you're gonna set to notify, I have to notify the Alvison County in the morning which one you pick for her to be able to get the public hearing set.
The seventh, right?
The seventh.
Yeah, I've got, it's usually average.
Well, she'll, she'll tell you this.
Right, I'm gonna notify her in the morning after this, after y'all ready.
People actually gonna approve the tax rate this meeting?
No, I'm gonna, we, y'all gonna set it to have a public hearing.
Got it.
And then at the very last meeting, which if you're looking at my September, but my calendar, you have, I mean, if you're gonna pass it here, you gotta, you gotta set your tax ten days prior. You gotta have your public hearing when your tax rate at least a six.
Yeah, on the seventh. Are we gonna do it on Labor Day or are we gonna?
I know, 'cause the mayor has said since Monday's a holiday, we'll just have a meeting on the sixth.
Okay.
And then we'll go into our regular meeting on the nineteenth.
Yep.
We're gonna have to pass this, pass the budget and the tax rate, which I'll have those ordinances in place.
This September sixth meeting, we could have another, we should have, we should have these, vote on these, uh, things that we're gonna add.
Y'all have to let me know what, I, I want to finish this budget. I have been working on this this whole time. So if you're ready to add money for lift stations, I've got a little money there. We can put fifty thousand in there, but you can only do forty thousand.
I'm trying to help wind it up for you.
Well, I, I wind it up.
I don't think that we're gonna add anything else to.
So I guess what is, at what point are we gonna vote on these projects that we're gonna add?
Well, we need to go ahead, because Debbie needs to finish up. We're, we're at the end.
Can we, can we add the, um, the, the employee helper?
I, I, I did, if you look back, if you look at your add in, I already said, you'll see there's just, there's money there.
Do you remember roundabout way?
I think I put twenty-five or thirty thousand for, for the year.
Should we vote on the next one on the sixth?
Now, y'all need to, y'all need to decide which y'all want now, so I can go back to, and, but it, 'cause I have to create the budget over again.
I, I'm probably out of step, but what I'm here, what I'm, because we operate in, this is a workshop meeting, we talk about it. All right? In the next meeting, which is a regular meeting, we would vote on the, adding these projects.
Budget workshop is between y'all deciding what projects you want, what you want me to add, and you figure it out tonight.
That's what I wanted to add, right there for me.
Well, y'all have to decide that, but there's not enough money in that budget.
There never will be.
To do that, but you can't, I, I'm not, I don't want to go into next year as a negative.
Okay, here's the deal.
Okay.
Here's the thing. And this is how we get from, I believe how, how it happens. We had the same thing last year, and they had the same thing a year before and a year before. Because the, the base fixed cost is always gonna be extremely tight. The only place to get more money, right, is from the reserves, and that's just what we've been doing. We did it in the pack, hundred and three thousand dollars, huh? Hundred and three thousand dollars?
Hundred and three thousand dollars what, Deb?
Reserve.
For what?
Yeah, just for projects, because when they were making their budget, they thought they needed it.
Well, no, I think it was actually set aside for some type of project, and I just, I'm not familiar what it was.
So, and I would.
I don't know where Brad, Brad may can answer that question for you, 'cause I know.
I guess where I'm coming from, guys, is in the allocations and budget projects, we allocated one, we figured one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Where'd it come from?
But it's our budget, I mean.
No, we're, the money, oh, it's real money. It had to come from the reserve. We didn't have any.
Municipal services or?
You, you got, you got ready, you come in, your taxes, your franchise fees.
Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of, of it came from the county that matched us on our street project fund. The other projects, we've been saving and allocating funds for years and adding them up. We, we didn't, we can't do a million dollars worth of projects a year. Our budget doesn't support it.
I'm not saying that.
When you're saying just put it in and figuring out how to pay for it later, and that's not the way we operate.
Nah, come on. Here's the deal. We, um, I think the difference is.
I don't understand.
And I take this to the bank.
What is the priorities that you want? Do you want to go with the next line of the waterliner pro, projects? Is that a priority?
Priorities, whatever. I listed.
That three hundred and sixty thousand, I, I got it in you. That's a priority.
That's what I said, we're, that's in there.
So.
The lift station.
Um, so is the beautification.
I, I mean, I tried to.
If, if you take, to, to do these projects, okay, if you take.
If we get these done this year, maybe we can add some more next year.
That's the point. But anyway, listen.
We need to do that next year.
Let me just say this, that's cool.
Okay.
But the projects add up that I listed, plus whatever else we wanna add to it. Eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, say, we just have a number.
Okay.
Okay, we're bringing four fifty-three over that we. We didn't spend, this is what you're talking about, Russell. You save money, you moved it, project the budget. So we got four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that we picked up, that we saved. And just what you guys have always done, all right, so you move it to the next project, to the next set of projects. What that means is you need to fund three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, that four?
And move this city forward. That's simple.
Debbie, do we have four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars left over from last fiscal year's budget? Now, are you talking to?
We have five hundred, well, when you get down to it, well, I.
Because we didn't pay for the roads yet?
We have, I have not paid for the roads yet.
I don't understand where you're getting this four hundred and fifty-three thousand.
They have not come in, they have not sent me any kind of invoice to pay for that four hundred or three seventy-five.
We only committed a certain amount of money, Russell.
Three, three.
We voted on this council for it, and that's it. The amount that we voted for the roads and we approved is three hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And we have not paid for it, so that's still gonna come out of that.
That's what I figured.
But also, also now.
We have four thirty-five left over, and we're not.
Yeah, we're wanting to add a couple of the roads too.
We still gotta pay for three seventy-five.
Where y'all gonna add some roads to that?
That project's not complete.
That's why I gave you this sheet. All right, which is in there. Thank you. That's all I have.
Um.
I still don't know anything, which I will be to do.
Well, I guess that brings it to close.
I'm sure Debbie's gonna finalize the proposed budget. That's in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with that.
I mean, it's as close as I needed. I mean, it's actual numbers if you don't.
I'm doing that too.
Huh?
That's what I'm doing with that too.
The, okay, with that being said, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. We can call it here, babe.
Just two minutes ago.
Where's the line, guys?